It's my pleasure to introduce our moderator for the evening. Julie Lugo Sarah is a former member of the Culver City Unified School District Board of Directors and, among many other things, the official historian of the city of Culver City. She's an active member of many local organizations and the author of two books on local history plus a cookbook, right?
It's going to be six books.
Six books? Well, I'm a little behind here.
You've been writing a lot.
Yeah, and I do need to do one other thing before I turn this over to you. And I'm sorry I had to leave it until now, but we've been asked to ask for a moment of silence on behalf of Leah Nero.
Nico.
Nico, excuse me, I can't read. She's the mother of four and has had a massive stroke and is currently on life support. Her children range from 10 months old to a sixth grader at, I believe, Lynn How. And so this has a profound impact on the community, and I hope you will all keep that family in your thoughts. So.
Are we ready to go?
We are ready to go. Okay.
Two left over.
That question is getting harder and harder to answer as we go on. See, the thing is, if we...
Because I'm likely to use my 20 minutes in my first question.
Then you can go home.
Please don't do that at a school board meeting.
Yeah, we'll just have to see how it works. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. If we're still going at 10 of nine, there should be plenty of time for each of you to have a two-minute closing statement, right?
Yes.
Yeah, as long as there's not a lot of stuff happening in between. And I see you all have something to take notes with.
That's a time of question.
Yes.
Are we totally time used or time left?
Time left.
So we have to subtract what they've done for 20 minutes?
Well, your timer will do that.
So use a timer, not a stopwatch.
Yep, Roger will help you. Steve will help you. We're all helping each other here. And I've turned my mic off.
Hello.
Just let me ask, are there any other questions besides that of, you know, of great import? Yeah, I think, oh, yes.
Because the question that was asked about having those extra two minutes is a little bit mushy.
Yeah, it is mushy.
It would be nice to have a little check time, so, you know, maybe at 8:30 to determine whether they're not...
Yeah, and actually, I thought at one time, hey, you know, if we really get this underway and rolling along, we may find that the remaining time divided by three is enough that we could say, hey, each candidate could have five more minutes. But that's becoming less and less possible as we delay our start.
Say, everybody gets two minutes at the end and then clear.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we'll just stop where we are at 8:50 or thereabouts and do the two-minute closing statements. And I do want to say I appreciate the candidates' willingness to participate in something experimental. It'll be different for them. The others are going to be the same. This is going to be the one they'll remember. Right.
Thank you very much, Frances, for all of your innovative ideas. All right. Okay, that takes time away from whom? Let me see. Okay, let's think of a topic. You've heard all of the topics. How about the oversight of Measure CC Bond Funds? Does anybody have an interest in talking about that? You will enter?
Could you use your microphone? It's hard to hear you.
I am. It's on. Really?
Yeah.
Okay. No one has ever accused me of being quiet, so I'm really surprised.
Hello.
Okay, I don't want to take any more time out of what they'd like to do. Shall we start? Do you all want to have a say in this issue? The oversight of Measure CC Bond Funds?
Again, I thought we were supposed to do intros first.
Yes, we are. Okay. Let's go first, second, and third.
I love this experiment.
Okay.
Hi, thank you to the audience for being here, the League of Women Voters. Thank you to Julie for moderating and being part of this experiment. I am Ann Burke. I am running for school board in Culver City. I have two children in the school district. I have served in the district as an active volunteer for over six years, and in 2011, I actually received the Seize Candidate Volunteer of the Year Award from the Office of Child Development. I am a first-generation college student, and so I personally recognize the anxieties and frustrations of first-generation college student families and students. I hold two master's degrees. I have one from Cal State Northridge in Knowledge Management and another from Loyola Marymount University School of Education in Counseling.
Thank you. Scott?
Hello, my name is Scott McVarish. I am a parent in the district. My daughter will be entering the middle school next year, and I'm very excited for that. I've been a volleyball coach for many years, and I hope to continue that when she's in the middle school. I've worked with school districts for over 10 years. In our district, I helped cofound the United Parents of Culver City. I am attorney. I've been an attorney for 15 years, and I also did the Four Great Schools Interview Series, and I'm continuing to do that, where I've interviewed various people in the school district about their vision for the district. I believe I have a good vision for where we need to go in the future, and I think I know how to help bring us there. And I look forward to this forum, and I thank the League for giving me that opportunity. But I want to tell you three things that you will get from me if I am elected to the school board. The very first thing is, I know my strengths and I know my weaknesses. My strengths are that I'm an attorney, and I really dig deep into issues. I understand things very well, and I have a deep background in education law, the Education Employment Relations Act, and school district budgets and bargaining. Number two, I have spent probably at least 10 years working on issues somewhat related to bonds, but in this school district in particular, I understand what the role of a school board member is, and that is, first and foremost, to work on our bond and prioritize our bond. It is a historic health and safety bond worth $107 million. It will profoundly change our school district in both small and large ways. I worked on it from the very beginning. Laura Chardier credits me with being one of the main strategists of the bond when we first began discussing it. And I've been to many, many board study sessions on it, bond oversight committees. So that's number one, prioritize the bond. Number two is to be the boss for the superintendent. That's the one employee we have. We have to have a shared vision with the superintendent, and we need to be able to work closely with him and give him the resources so that he can fly. And this superintendent is flying. Number three is you have to have a larger vision, and you acquire that larger vision from talking with members of the community, talking with parents and with teachers, and then implementing that vision. I believe I have that vision that I'll be discussing. What running for school board teaches you, you can't do however, is to micromanage district employees. You can't go after professional development. You can't go after curriculum. We have an amazing assistant superintendent, Dr. Crumpie, who does not need to be micromanaged by us. We need the big vision on the board, and I believe I have that big vision. And then finally, the third thing you're going to get from me is that I do truly represent all of the schools. I have spent years now working with United Parents of Culver City. I have been in the living rooms of teacher leaders from every single school site, learning their issues, learning what motivates them, what their problems are in the district. That was one of the advantages when I helped cofound the United Parents of Culver City, is I traveled wide in the school district. I got to know every single school, which is why I have, and Ann as well, has endorsements from parent leaders at every single school site. And we take that of, we take that as one of the most important parts of this campaign, is that if we're on the board, we're going to be able to work with parent leaders from every single school because they know us and they trust us, and they've worked with us, both on the bond, United Parents of Culver City, and the PTA. So thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Good evening. I'm Kelly Kent. So where's the perfect range? All right, just right here. I moved to Culver City in 2010, and I came here because Culver City has fantastic schools. So at that time, I had one daughter, and I was already out here for graduate school, and I was getting a PhD in neuroscience, and I was about to finish my dissertation at that time. And shortly into writing my dissertation, number two came along, so I defended that dissertation eight months pregnant. And then when I graduated in 2011, I continued doing research in my postdoctoral work, also at USC. And that's really where my journey in education began, because I started getting involved in autism research in my postdoc. So I started looking at hormones specifically in autism in children. And I realized that my family goals and my research passions were not perfectly matched. And so instead of doing a traditional Research One academic path, I quickly decided to get into something else, which led me to teaching. So I started teaching at Antioch University, which is right here in Culver City, and they have a graduate program in clinical psychology, and I started teaching neuroscience essentially there, but psycho pharmacology and other neurobiology courses. And then I started teaching at Moore Park Community College in Simi Valley with undergrads, so both graduate students and undergraduate students, and realized that that indeed was where I was going to fulfill my passion, because it's very rewarding to teach people about how plastic our brains are and how much we can change and get better at everything and anything that we do. And so I, after realizing that teaching was something I was passionate about, formed a company with a business partner, another woman neuroscientist, and we formed a business called Adapted Consultants. And Adapted Consultants consists entirely of women neuroscientists, so we're very proud of that because there are six of us. And we train teachers in how to incorporate what we know about how the brain learns into their classroom design, into their lesson plans, and into building community, and how to resolve stress in the classroom, and how to think about attention, and how to build innovation and creativity in the classroom. And so now, I'm sort of winding down from teaching, and I'm winding up on this business pursuit, where we go into any and every school environment that will have us, and give professional development to teachers, and give parent education to parents, and also teach kids about their brains, because if kids learn that their brain is like a muscle, that gets stronger with practice, they're much more motivated to learn. And so now that's where I stand with feeling very rewarded with my passion about the brain. The moment I moved to Culver City, I began to get involved in political arenas, because it's a small town, and it turns out that you don't have to meet too many folks before you meet someone who's involved politically. So very quickly, I started getting kind of involved in this, and it was moving for me because I discovered what an impact it can have in a small community. And I very recently began to see that my qualifications and experience in education now for 10 years made me really nicely suited to seek a position on the Board of Education for Culver City. And so I decided that having qualifications as an educator, having qualifications as a parent volunteer, and then having qualifications as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, which I have been serving on for a year, made me really nicely qualified for school boards. So just to tell you briefly about a couple more things, and then I'll wrap up. I have been on the Parks and Recreation Commission for just about a year and have some insight into what things look like on the city end, so I think that that's a really valuable asset. And my parent volunteer work has been something I'm incredibly proud of. I've worked on beautification efforts. I've been on the green team. I've taught nutrition through Growing Great and many other things, but really the thing, the badge that I wear so proudly is that I started a Spanish program at Lynn How, which is now wildly successful. Last year, it was entirely volunteer-administered and taught, and we served 200 students, and now this year, it's funded by the Parent Boosters, and we train teachers for two eight-hour sessions with this incredible curriculum, and the students are so happy, and our teachers speak in Spanish the entire time, and it's a beautiful success. And I will stop.
Sounded like a lot more than two minutes for all of you.
No.
But that's okay. I think you're doing well. Now, have you forgotten what I said before?
I have not.
Okay. Oversight of Measure CC Bond Funds. Does anybody have an opinion on that?
No one has an opinion.
Would we like to start here?
That's great.
Okay.
I can identify, as the school district also has identified, the three most critical issues for you voters with this bond in the coming election. Your student and employee health and safety, creating the technological infrastructures, standardized learning spaces, and the creation of highly effective learning environments in our schools. But it's probably easier to remember these three things with one four-letter word, and that is bond. As you recall, about 75% of the voters here in Culver City voted in favor of the $106 million bond in 2014. The next board here is charged with making immediate, difficult, and critical decisions that will affect the community for decades. There are only two candidates up here today that have supported the bond from the beginning. Scott and I supported the bond since day one. We helped the formation of the Bond Campaign Committee and worked throughout the whole bond process to get it voted in. We worked with UPPCC to get the vote out, get parents engaged, get the community engaged in what the bond meant for our schools. We visited every school site to assess the needs during that campaign process. We talked to administrators. We talked to teachers. We talked to students during that time. So we've been involved for a long time with this bond. I participated, in fact, in the Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP workshop the district held, to assess the needs across the district, not just at one school, but all the schools. And then finally, only two candidates here actually voted on the bond. So this is pretty important now, as we look forward to who might sit there to make those critical and difficult decisions. The time for major construction is June and July and August of 2016. It takes about three to six months for the California Division of the State Architect to approve Culver City plans, and it takes time to get board approvals, construction plans, bidding, all that takes time. However, we don't have time to waste. So I promise you that I will do everything in my power to expedite that three to six months. I think with the board's approval and cooperation, Scott and I can work to expedite that to zero to three months with Sacramento and get the changes that we need with the bond in our schools now.
Kelly, would you like to go next?
Sure, I'd like to address the topic of oversight of the bond spending. And my comments on that are that I think that the more that the public is involved, the better. I really think that the purpose of an oversight committee is to ensure that we are representing the desires of the constituents and all the stakeholders. So, for instance, there is an oversight committee, and I will really do my best to ensure that that committee best represents the entire community. So that's going to be demographically, geographically, and in terms of any stakeholder position that they might represent, business, senior, taxpayer organization, there's a number of different stakeholders that need to be represented on those committees. But really, I think I'm always going to take the position of the more diversity on these oversight committees, the better. And I'm going to check in with that regularly to be sure that there's a good number of people on this oversight committee and that they represent Culver City as a whole. I also think it's going to be really important for the oversight committees to have a better track record of public notice. So the oversight committee thus far is new. They've only had four meetings a year. They just voted to change this on Tuesday night, that they're going to have more than four meetings a year, which is really fantastic. And there needs to be a lot of public notification. Do people know that these meetings are happening? Do they know when they're happening? Do they know they're invited to attend? Do they know how to get comments to the committee? Right? Because otherwise, only the people who are sitting at the dais and their closest friends really know what conversation is being had and how the decisions are being made on bond spending.
Thank you. You've been a gentleman. You may go next.
Thank you. So we actually have the Bond Oversight Committee Chair here, Jamie Wallace, who deserves to be recognized for her hard work. But I think there's a little bit of confusion as to the difference between the Bond Oversight Committee and the Bond Advisory Committee. It's the Bond Advisory Committee that is really going to be moving this process along, and it is moving fast. I've been involved with this from day one, and I cannot believe where we are and how quickly we have gotten there, particularly in the last few months. This week alone, we are deciding upon the architectural firms that will really create the template of what our schools are going to look like. That's happening now. By November and December, they will already be starting all of their community input meetings, so the time to get your input is then, because at that point, then it's going to be moving on into construction and permits. So those of you interested in it, I would advise you to both go to the C-Back Meeting, which is the Bond Advisory Committee, and just realize, this is happening now. Input is now. Diversity later on, I mean, diversity is great, absolutely, but we need to be involved now, not later. And even someone as involved as I have been, I cannot believe how quickly things are moving and how much you can miss in one week or two weeks if you're not paying attention. I've been trying to pay attention, and ultimately, I can say this about the priorities for the bond. The priorities for the bond really do have to come from the school sites themselves. Immediately, you have safety and health. We already worked on that for two years before the bond passed, and since the bond has passed, it's going to take a big chunk of the money. But after that, there will be money left over at every single school site. And that is when the teachers, the parents, the administrators, and other stakeholders, perhaps neighbors, will have to decide what exactly is their priority. It's going to be different at every school site, but it's mostly about listening, informing them it's happening, and it's happening fast, and then listening to what their needs are, because it's going to be different at each school site. But I will pledge this: air conditions in every classroom, whether it is a box air condition or central air. And the reason I make that pledge is, the world is getting hotter. It is not going to get cooler. Scott Houston, our Great Water Board member, said, "What we're experiencing now, what people are calling the drought, will no longer be, possibly will no longer be classified as the drought. This is the new normal." The drought is when things a lot worse than this will happen. The idea that our classrooms will kind of be like they were 10 years ago, where it was manageable, is not valid anymore. We're going to need air conditioning in every single classroom to have a safe working environment and a conducive learning environment. Whether that's going to be bond money will all depend on whether it's central air, et cetera, and I don't want to bore you on those details, but at the very least, that will be one priority I have for the classrooms.
Thank you. Are we? Does anybody have an interest in talking about curriculum and instruction and starting perhaps with Common Core? Go ahead.
Let me go first.
Go ahead.
Okay. One of the roles of a school board is to ensure a safe and appropriate educational environment is provided to all the students. So what does that mean, then? What does that look like for us now with Common Core in the picture? Common Core support in our district is happening. We've talked to the Assistant Superintendent, Katie Crumpie, and we've been in touch with her about all the types of work they're doing with the teachers and the students. They're doing amazing work with PLCs, their professional learning communities. And the focus of these PLCs is learning and a collaborative culture of learning, and also the results of that learning. I am an advocate of Common Core and what its mission is and what it hopes to achieve for student learning. There are four questions that our district asks, and our teachers ask, when they're doing these PLCs. What do we want our kids to know? How will we know if they know it? What will we do if they don't? And what will we do if they already do? So as teachers and as a district and the board, we will continually be having those questions when we talk about curriculum and instruction in our school district. As regards to exceptional children, we believe that, I believe, that every child deserves a rigorous education across the board, and I know our school district does as well. All the kids deserve this. This includes our gifted and talented students, our other special needs students, our mid rated students, our students who want alternative pathways after high school, and the students who want to go to college. I believe that all children can learn at high levels, and so I believe what the district is doing now with Common Core, with their clusters and their small learning groups and environments, is what we will continue to support.
Would you like to go next?
Sure. I think there's a few subtopics of curriculum, so I'll just kind of address them all at once. About two or three years ago, I was in meetings with the superintendent and a group of angry parents. It looked like they were ending the scholars program and certainly taking away one or two classes. And eventually, they did remove the scholars program from the middle school. It's kind of like an honors program, if you will. I was skeptical at the time, thinking, I don't know if this is the best move, because we've got some very, very motivated students and some very motivated parents for those students, so taking away scholars seems like we're going in the wrong direction. But I can say what they have replaced it with is excellent. They now have something called gate clustering. It basically allows a school, a teacher in the classroom, to differentiate their instruction for a handful of students who need more of a challenge, more rigor in the classroom, without removing those kids from the classroom. And the way the district implemented it really deserves recognition. Instead of just telling teachers to do it, they trained the teachers with some excellent professional development. They actually got the teachers certified, and now they have those teachers receiving an extra stipend for that work. And that's the way you have to do it. The teachers opted in. It was not forced upon them, and I think people on the whole are very happy with this program. So I love that they did that. It's really not my role to make changes to that. I applaud it. If there were problems with it, I would question it, but I do like what they've done. The other part is, for curriculum, is advanced placement classes. Advanced placement is tricky, and part of the reason is, is you have to have a minimum of 20 kids to have an AP class. Well, some AP classes, you just can't find 20 kids, and budgetary concerns generally means the district doesn't offer it. Well, the district seems to be doing two very innovative things about AP classes right now that, again, we should give kudos to them for. The very first is that we are allowing kids, for the first time, to take it through iAcademy. iAcademy, for those who don't know, is basically an internet supplement program for kids. So when they're on their computers and their iPads, they are actually studying advanced work and not just on Facebook posting pictures. And that is amazing, because you don't need 20 kids to have an AP class through iAcademy. The second thing that we're trying to do at least is work with West LA College to offer more classes for kids at our high school. Those aren't technically AP classes, but they're college credit. So it's even better, because somebody else is paying for it. The kids are actually getting a rigorous education, because they're with college students, they're not having to travel far to do it, and there's more opportunity, more of a diverse selection of classes. It's an excellent, excellent program, and I don't know who innovated it in the district. I'm assuming it's the superintendent and Dr. Crumpie, but just kudos for them for doing it. It makes me really look forward to my daughter being in high school, because by then, there'll be even more great programs.
Thank you. Okay, so curriculum and instruction with a number of subcategories, the first being Common Core. I'm a huge proponent of Common Core.
I'm a huge proponent of Common Core. It corresponds really nicely with all of the latest in neuroscience of education. It promotes student-driven learning. It promotes inquiry-based learning, which means that it's an active kind of learning as opposed to a passive intake of facts. It promotes project-based learning and applied learning. In other words, you're learning based on the real world around you, okay? All of those correspond perfectly to what we know about the neuroscience of education and promoting engagement, in particular in students. So if students are asking questions about matters that they care about with friends that they have relationships with in a way that challenges them, they are engaged. And engagement is a buzzword in education right now, because experts know that engaged students learn and retain much more than those that are not engaged, and they have an intrinsic motivation to learn the content, meaning we do not have to scream at them to get their work done. To speak to particular instructional models, and I do want to clarify here that I do think that the board's role can be a very important one in terms of curriculum and instruction. I do not plan to be hands-off when it comes to instruction and curriculum, and I don't think that that's the right approach. Okay? And I have a lot of very specific things to say about it because of my training and expertise. And there are many ways where we are not meeting the needs of certain students right now. And we are getting better. And I met with the superintendent this week, and we have many progressive models of education, and I'm very impressed and proud of them. That does not mean that there are not ways to improve. There are ways to improve, and there are ways to facilitate teachers being able to reach every single student, every single one in a class of 30 or somewhere around there. And I have some ideas, and I'll just mention one. One idea is that of a flipped classroom, okay? And a flipped classroom is not a brand-new idea, but it's particularly interesting when you're trying to facilitate teachers being able to reach many more students than they're capable of reaching all at one time in a traditional lecture format, okay? In a flipped classroom, it means that students at home with the assistance of technology, this is very smart, well-thought-out use of technology, they do the reading that they would have traditionally gotten in a lecture form in the class. They do that at home. They even have short videos so that they can go back and rewind, three-minute videos, six-minute videos, the kind of videos they will watch. And they are not afraid to go back and rewind. Might they be afraid to raise their hand and ask a question in class? Yes. But at home, they can move at their own pace. This is particularly important to me from the perspective of girls in co-ed educational classrooms, where I know very well that girls are very shy to raise their hands in middle school and beyond in certain settings and with certain personalities. This is also true with stereotyped children, children who are traditionally stereotyped and feel shy to raise their hand. Now at home, they can review that video as many times as they like. And then when they come into class, they do work problems with the instructor, who can then meet with them either in small groups or individually during that class time, and to meet them where their needs are. Instead of them going home and doing 30 work problems incorrectly and therefore learning how to do it wrong 30 times, they do the reading at home, come back into the classroom, work on those problems with the teacher, who can meet them where they are. This also-- so this allows for very personalized learning, and it allows a student to reach mastery. And mastery is a very important term in education, because any student needs to feel that they have achieved mastery, to be engaged enough and to reach a level that they will retain and be able to apply that material. That's very important. And this flipped mastery model is one that I'm extremely interested in. And just to answer questions about concerns about the amount of work that teachers would have to do, it actually-- it does take some work at the outset. You do have to do some front-loading, for sure. But they don't have to write daily lesson plans, and they do not have to grade at home. And so I'm very interested in looking at this for ways to reach special ed students, for ways to reach gifted and talented students, and to get at these questions of honors and AP, because right now, those needs are not being met well enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does everybody know how many minutes they have left?
No.
Okay. Okay. Let's do a little truth and-- hmm? Okay. Now I do. Okay. So the least-- all right. Let's go to Kelly then, up to Kelly. And the topic would be parent and community engagement.
Okay. I have an interesting perspective on this one because of starting the Spanish program at Lynn How. So there's, you know, there's a real truth that I think probably most people in this room are familiar with, that, you know, we have these very faithful volunteers, and they give their all and then sometimes burn out, right? So there can be an overload with that volunteer pool and a sense of burnout. But even also, you know, when there are parents that are perceived as a small entrenched leadership group, like the core volunteers that are always seen on campus and leading the activities, those others who are not a part of that core group may decide that they're not going to volunteer, right? Because they, for whatever reason, if they're not intentionally, don't feel welcomed, right? And this therefore lessens the infusion of new energy and ideas into community engagement that is so important for a successful educational environment. So how do you solve that problem? Experimentation is one way. Through the Spanish program at Lynn How, we've managed to really get nice community engagement, because I don't speak Spanish, I can't teach Spanish, and I needed to reach out to the parents that do speak Spanish and that can teach Spanish. And as a, you know, as a byproduct of that, these community members that care so much about participating but hadn't previously done so were brought into the fold, felt really a part of it, but in a really leadership role. Like, they really felt embraced and also that they were giving something that only they could provide, and that was really important. So we learned a little lesson there. But I think that there are many more models to use when thinking about community engagement. So some ideas, we have a YMCA here. I think that it's possible to partner with the YMCA to offer an exercise class on campus that would be before school that both parents and teachers could take. And so people have to exercise before work anyway. A lot of people do this as part of their routine. What if it was on campus? And what if this brought teachers and parents together to get to know each other, and they build community, and they then feel much more engaged and comfortable with each other? There's also a question of cultural proficiency. I presented the Neuroscience of Bias at the Cultural Proficiency Institute this year, and a whole bunch of educators, educators go to that Cultural Proficiency Institute every year to educate themselves on how to be thoughtful and considerate about the culture of people you're not intimately familiar with, and how to take that into account in your educational environment. The goal is to have family involvement strategies, to implement them, and then to check in throughout the year in an ongoing way. Are you making an impact? Are you including everybody in the community?
Thank you. Can I see the other two numbers that are left?
Put up the numbers.
Okay, so--
I would be next?
Yes.
So I think a good example of my approach on getting parent involvement is the co-founding of the United Parents of Culver City. It was done at a time when there-- a lot of parents felt their voices were not being heard by the district. And I can tell you that as a parent who felt like my voice was not being heard by the district, it was frustrating and it was intimidating. When you go to meetings and you are just dismissed and you are not given credit for basically being your child's parent and feeling like you know, or you have an idea of what's best for your child, and the group of you knows what's best for that kid's classroom or those kids' classrooms, it's demoralizing. So United Parents of Culver City was meant to surpass that problem by able to-- by being able to get parents from every single school, which we did, and get their voices together. And it took a lot of meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting. We were meeting in parents' houses from the different schools. We were meeting at the Culver Hotel. We were meeting at some sushi restaurant, as I recall, and someone made me do karaoke, which was not a good thing for the, for the group. But ultimately, it takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of effort. I am 100% in favor of it. There just shouldn't be any illusions about that it's an easy thing to do. Now, the thing to facilitate parental involvement, I believe, is to have an open, willing attitude to listen. And this superintendent has been wonderful. He hasn't agreed with everything I've said, but even when he doesn't agree with me, I feel so well listened to that I kind of leave thinking, this was a great meeting. And I didn't get my way, but it doesn't matter. I was listened to. That meant-- that means a lot to me. And as a board member, if I were elected, I would be listening to parents, listening to community members, because that's just kind of what I've been trained to do. As an attorney, I listen very closely to my client's story, and I listen to the parts of the story that the clients are hiding from me. And I dig it out, because that's what we do as attorneys, and that's what I've been doing as a parent leader. The one thing I would say that I would like to make see a little bit more uniform is teacher communication with parents. In some of my daughter's classes, I've known every day exactly what is happening, what I was expected to do that night with my child and how my child was doing. In other classes, not so much. It feels like it's increasing, and I'm not sure if that's a district initiative, if that's been bargained, or just some teachers have a greater ability to work with internet programs than others. But it is something that's important. The more communication I get from my daughter's teachers, the more involved I feel. The more involved I feel, the more I can help her. And it's just a positive feedback cycle that I would wish every parent could feel, and hopefully, our district will make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I was also part of the formation of United Parents of Culver City. And again, as Scott alluded to, it really gave parents a true seat at the decision-making table. So I'm really actually very proud of that, because parents didn't quite have that before. And what it really gave us was an opportunity to meet, again, the parent leaders at every school. So we have been working with all of the schools in the district for a very long time to really understand and build relationships, so that it wasn't one school over here doing their own thing, and La Biona over here doing their own thing, and Lynn How and El Marino, but instead figuring out how we could work together and what our common goals were instead of individual goals. So that's what I'm really the most proud of with those efforts. If any of you out there have been part of PTA or a booster club, then you know that it's all about parent engagement and fundraising. I was a El Marino PTA president. I was on the executive board for the Booster Club El Marino, the Advocates for Language Learning. And I'm the fourth vice president on council PTA, which is the PTA that represents all the schools in the district. So we are all about advocating for our students through our parent and community engagement by getting the community involved. Scott and I are very fortunate that we recently received a Chamber of Commerce endorsement. We've had those conversations also to figure out how we can get those, that part of the community involved in our schools as well. Let me continue that. The other component that I would like to continue working on in the district is how to get diverse families more involved, how to get the English learners' families more, the first-generation college student families more involved. How do we bring them in? One of the initiatives that the council PTA and La Biona's worked on is workshops for these families. So we are actively working, and I'm actually working on, how to create workshops and education opportunities for these families and parents in our school district.
Thank you. Okay, can I take a look and see what we got? Okay.
So I feel like I can only answer one more question.
Okay.
So I'd like to choose that question. Is that--
What would that question be?
Diversity of voices on the board.
How do you feel about that?
I think it's--
It's fine.
Go ahead, and then Scott will be next. Ann will be after that. Thank you.
So I want to talk about diversity of voices on the board from the perspective of two places. So one, I am uniquely a professional educator that will serve on the board, and we are losing the voices of educators on the board as the two that are leaving are going to leave us. And it's a very important perspective to have. And I'm also going to talk about it in terms of demographics. And it's, it's really important to think about this, because every board member and every parent and every teacher says, "I care about all children." Of course we do. There is not one child that we're going to be like, "I'm not going to give a crap about you." That doesn't happen, of course, right? We all care about all children. But the truth is, we are human beings, and we have brains, and our brains are influenced by biases that we are completely unaware of, completely unconscious of. So if I split this group into two, and I take one half of you, and I subliminally show you a picture of a girl handing you a piece of cake very pleasantly and sweetly, but so quickly that you don't know that you saw it, I ask you, "Did you see a picture of a girl?" And you say, "No," but I showed it to you. And then I take this half of the group, and I show you a picture of a girl, and she's about to throw that piece of cake at you. Okay? The difference is sweet, not so sweet, right? But again, I ask you, "Did you see a picture of a girl?" You say, "No." So I showed it to you in a flash. But then, I show you a picture of a girl standing there with her aunt, her arms in front of her, just standing pleasantly, and I say, "Classify her as naughty or nice." What do you think's going to happen? This group's going to classify her as nice. This group's going to classify her as naughty reliably across the board. That's a very predictable effect. That means there are so many influences on our decision-making that we are unaware of that it has to be accounted for. There are ways to account for that. One of them is to build community. Culver City is fabulous at that. We have this incredible, small-town community feel. When you love people, you are much less likely to act on your negative biases towards them. So thank goodness we have that. The other, and much more profound and significant way to impact this, is by having diversity on policymaking boards. That's the way to do it. Because if you have a uniform voice, whether they try hard or not, and even if they get training, they will misrepresent some of the population. And so the better you can ensure diversity in voices on a policymaking board, the more likely you are to serve the needs of the entire community, and I cannot stress it enough. I am the only candidate with commissioner experience. I have relationships with officials at the city. I have people who know my work and trust it and have seen me do good things. I am the only candidate who is an educator and who has been a professional educator for some time and makes education everything that I do, and specifically from the perspective of the brain. And I am the only candidate who has a child at a Title I school, which means that she goes to school with children who need subsidized lunch. And that is an important perspective to bring to the board.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you. So I will be the only candidate, or the only school board member if elected, that is fluent in Spanish. That is very important for a district with as many Latino students as we have. I will be able to communicate with parents in their-- for those who are monolingual Spanish speakers, and there are a lot, I will be the only school board member that's able to communicate with them in their primary language. I think that's important, because I've gone to a lot of meetings with English learner parents at El Marino, where we have a lot of English language, or, excuse me, of English learner parents. And sometimes the-- if Tracy Pimila is there, of course, then she will be speaking in Spanish to them, because she's fluent. But sometimes when district personnel are brought in, they're not fluent in Spanish. And certainly for the school board, if they want to address them, everything has to be translated. There's a little bit of a loss there. I bring some diversity in that even though there is one other attorney on the board, I am, my background is in education law. It is in the Education Employment Relations Act, which governs the relationship between the school district and the teachers. That is incredibly useful for a school board to have on both of those fronts. Sometimes we can certainly rely on outside counsel, but sometimes outside counsel's opinions are, how should I say, couched. They're couched based on that person's leanings. So sometimes you get very, very liberal interpretations of what a school board can do, and sometimes, more likely, you get very, very conservative interpretations of what a school board can do. I would be able to fill in the gaps and show my fellow school board members that there is perhaps more to the issue than what they are being told. And it is a shame we are losing-- And it is a shame we are losing Nancy Goldberg as our only K-12 educator. And she's rolling her eyes, but, you know, that is a perspective that is difficult for us to lose. None of us are K-12 educators, and I wish that we had that as an option. Perhaps in two years, we will. But until we do, what we can do is listen to our educators. We can listen to our amazing assistant superintendents and superintendents when they tell us. They are all K-12-based, and I think those voices will help guide the board. Thank you.
Yeah. If we're speaking strictly diversity, I am the only candidate who is non-white. And I will be, if I'm elected, the only candidate who's non-white. So that's about as diverse as you get. My academic background in the School of Education LMU was counseling. And so that really brings in the whole mission of the whole child in the district, not just one aspect of the brain, but their whole well-being. I have academic experience in understanding what other factors make a child successful in their learning and in their life, frankly. I understand the diverse population, because I live and breathe it, and I have all my life. So I am able to be that true voice for diverse students and low-income students. We are fortunate on the board now that we have a, truly, we have a rocket scientist, and we have a former science teacher. We are very science-heavy on our board right now already. So it would be great to bring some other voices from a whole-child perspective, a counseling perspective, and other varieties of expertise.
Thank you. Okay, folks.
Hey, one more question.
I've got lots of time.
That may look like a lot of time. You have a question?
We could do career pathways, because I will probably use up all my time on that issue.
Well, that is not my intent, for anybody to use up all their time on any issue, I don't think.
Well, not much.
But if you would like to do that, that would be fine. Do you want to go ahead and start, though, at that end again? Or are you, do you want Scott to start?
I have the most time.
The most, okay, let's go this way.
All right. Sorry, guys.
Good in theory.
All right. So the question was about some career pathways for students. One of the initiatives and proposals that Scott and I have discussed at length that we have for the schools is alternative career pathways for students. We believe that there is, with all the 200 students in the high school, that there are other ways for them to succeed, and that success for students means a variety of things. One of those things is to bring about career pathways and internships and trades that allow them to come out of high school with other options. We have talked a lot, a length of a lot of the trades and the different skill set. For example, we met today with the sprinklers union, and we had a tour of their facility. And we got to see the classrooms and the workshops they have there. They actually teach students there the skills to develop, so they can come out with actual careers. These are for students who may or may not want to go to college. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. We have students at Culver Park who may want this, who may want to find another purpose in their life. So we want to be able to bring that into the school district, because right now, that's missing. It's a gap. So we know, and we've talked to students and teachers, said, "This would be wonderful." We've talked to these different trade groups, electricians, and sprinklers, and plumbers, and carpenters, and they're excited to bring that in for our students as well, to give them some type of other hope and other option outside of high school.
Thank you.
Me next. Okay. So I discussed the board roles earlier, and part of it is incredibly detailed. That's when we get to the bond. We have to keep on top of it. It helps to have a background in it, as Ann and I have already. But there's also a bigger vision issue that you want from a school board member. And my vision is about the secondary and about the high schools in particular. I believe this number is correct, but I will be correct with no doubt if it's not. About 40% of our kids go to college, which means the majority don't. Is that right, Kathy?
Is that right?
Oh, yeah. All right. So, yeah, I haven't gotten the numbers, but I believe that's true. Regardless, we do not have everybody going to college. What I would love to be able to see is the addition of three academies at the high school. We have this great Visual Performing Arts Academy, but I believe we need a Science and Technology Academy. Now, many of those kids will be going to college, obviously. An Industrial Arts and Trade Academy, which would offer an alternative path to going to college, and then a Leadership Academy. And I want to talk about each of those one by one. So the Science and Tech Academy. We've got Semtech, third-largest employer in Culver City. We have amazing startup companies in the Hayden Track that are technology-based, and we virtually have no relationship with them. I looked at the high school schedule last night. No coding class this semester, an IT class, but definitely no coding class. We have offered it once or twice in the past. The world has changed, and schools are always slow. It's not just Culver City by any means. It's hard to find a teacher who can actually do coding and who's certificated for that. That's why we needed an academy, to attract the right personnel, to attract the resources, so that we can have amazing tech opportunities for our kids and science opportunities. We've got a great relationship with JPL and NASA because of one board member, so let's utilize that for as long as we can get him to stay on the board. Number two is the Industrial Arts and Trades Academy. My grandfather taught in an apprenticeship program for 16 years for the IVW, electrician workers. That is the AP for kids not going to college. We don't have that. We don't have shop anymore for our kids. There's almost a message that if you don't go to college, you've failed high school. And so we push a lot of kids into college who may not be ready for it yet. They may be ready a few years later, but not right away. Let's get them into pre-apprenticeship programs that we're actually negotiating right now in the hopes that we'll get on the board. Those pre-apprenticeship programs would give kids credit towards their apprenticeship in these trades. Mind you, after four years in these trades, and all the time they're making $30 to $40 an hour, these kids will graduate as a journeyman electrician, making $80,000 a year at the age of 21. Or they'll go as a welder, making even more money, because of the amount of welders that we need right now. And then the third one is leadership. I want to, we've got a good program that's just starting, where we're going to try to place internships with the city hall and maybe even the school board. Let's expand that, though. Let's include entrepreneurship jobs. A lot of our kids have amazing business ideas, and who educates them on how to make those ideas into a reality? I think a Leadership Academy could do that. So that's my vision. That's the larger vision. Maybe those won't be the three academies. Maybe someone has a better idea for academies, but I think that's the route we go. Culver City High School's not in the top 100 of public high schools in California. We can be. With an academy idea, I think we will become a major, major center where people are excited to go to teach, people are already excited to teach now, but who are excited to come to Culver City to teach and be part of those academies. So that's my vision, and I hope you support it on November 3rd. Thank you.
Excuse me. I think this is really fun.
Easy for you to say.
That's right. And I hope others think so, too. But I'm thinking, I figure that we'll be almost done by 8:30, and we don't need to be done by 8:30 and have people do their closing statements then. So I'm thinking, maybe we have to give each candidate...
We're not, yeah, we're not finished yet.
Yeah, I just had...
We have to finish that, I think she's bringing up...
I had to find a place to break in to do... Is there...
I have the least time now.
Well, yeah, but she has the...
Yeah. Okay, so it's a moving target. But the thing is...
Okay, this is experimental, and we need to play along. But let's go ahead and have Kelly answer.
Can you handle five minutes from each candidate?
Yes.
Are you all in for it? Okay.
And I hope we won't drive the timers totally crazy.
Oh, we are. It's fine.
Okay. So it is a high school's obligation to do their best to prepare students for both college and career, for both, okay? And actually, if students are prepared for both college and career throughout their high school experience, then as an adult, they are much better prepared to decide where to go next. I did not know what I was doing for some years after high school. It took me a good time to find out, and now I'm a neuroscientist. So I like the path I took, but I was in no position to make a decision in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, or for the next three years afterwards. So we do need more opportunities at high school, absolutely. I want to be very careful about how we steer our students, okay? Because in particular, working-class and poor families, as well as parents without a college education, are more deferential to the advice of school authorities and less willing to push back on the system. So if we do start guiding students at ninth grade for a four-year technical program, which may be fantastic, but might not afford them college readiness, then we might be very well disadvantaging them in an unforgivable way. So I just want to be very careful about moving forward with that idea. Learning both academic and technical knowledge, when the two are combined and contextualized in real-world situations, prepares students for the full range of post-secondary options.
Okay, thank you. Now...
We have five minutes left.
Okay. And we'll, let's see, where shall we start?
Our next topic.
Well, I'm thinking teacher needs. We haven't talked about the teachers at all.
All right.
Okay. Does that sound like a good thing in the audience? Okay. All right. This is an experiment, so we're just going to have to go with this. I'll start right here.
Okay. I think if we were to poll the teachers now, their first need, they would say, is probably air conditioning. So I think that's a no-brainer there. We need to get, again, go back to the bond. We need to, teachers, I talked to the teachers, they said, "We need not only a comfortable, but a safe environment to teach in." And we need to support that, because they are handling our most precious assets, our children. So if they need quality and comfortable and safe classrooms to work in, then Scott and I will work to make sure that that infrastructure is in place soon, immediately if possible. We talked with the assistant superintendent of HR, Leslie Lockhart, recently, and the initiatives that she has in place, and they've done in the district, was to now work on not just the whole child, but the whole teacher. So what they're implementing is things like yoga classes and wellness and meditation, which is sort of my forte, where I come in with a counseling degree and as a meditation practitioner. So I've been able to talk to her with ideas about how we can support the teacher outside the classroom, so that they can be energized and fueled to work in the classroom. Because again, they're working with our children.
Scott?
Do I have more time left?
Oh, let's see, will we...
Okay, very good. So the very first thing that teachers need is respect. They need to feel like they're going to be listened to. They're going to need to feel like they're not being given a series of mandates. They need to feel like they're not going to have to chase whatever the President of the United States now wants them to do, or the governor in the legislature, or school board members. They need to feel like what they're learning today in professional development will not be scrapped in a year from now, because someone else has a new fancy idea. That's the type of consistency that gives teachers the respect that they deserve. Respect also can come in the form of compensation. Right now, we're at about the 49th percentage in the Los Angeles County teacher salaries, meaning if you look at all the districts, we're right about in the middle. I would definitely like to see that raised. I'd like to see that raised, so that our teachers are better compensated, and that we're attracting the best teachers possible to replace the teachers that are leaving. Teachers, first-year teachers, look at those salary schedules. They look to see where the district that they may be spending their career lines up in terms of compensation. So not only is it a form of respect, it's the best thing for the kids, because you're going to attract the best educators, who have so many options as to where they can work and at which district they can work. The input part of a teacher's career is, I've worked with teachers for 10 years, and so many of them feel like they just don't have input into what's happening at their schools. I feel like our district really is doing a good job of that. But ultimately, one of the ways we make sure teachers have input is to constantly go back to them and ask them for their opinion in surveys. You let them help create those surveys, so they have a feedback cycle into what is working and what's not working. Right now, we have an amazing professional development approach. In the past, professional development was mandated for teachers, so you end up having to go to professional development that absolutely did not help you, that you might be better than the person at that issue who's teaching you, or may not be particularly relevant to you. Right now, we have created it so that the teachers help guide it, and the teachers can opt into it. And ironically, or not ironically, we have more teachers than ever that are opting into professional development, once you no longer made it mandatory. The district deserves kudos for that. What we can't do is all of a sudden now give them a new, different regime for professional development. We can't change the curriculum on them. They've just had so many changes, from Common Core to the new math standards, to new gen science. There's been so many changes in the last years. Our teachers have done a great job at learning the new mandate from the feds and from the state. And I think we need to give them that consistency, because that consistency is a form of respect that doesn't cost any money.
Thank you. Kelly?
All right. So as a teacher, I believe that teachers needed to be supported in every way possible. But also, as a teacher, I understand that teachers know a lot about how they can best be supported, because they're on the ground. So they are the experts, and we need to include them in the decisions about what support they need, rather than making those decisions on their behalf, and allow them to be the innovators, and for them to develop within their professional learning communities, and allow them to tell us what they need to enable them to reach each and every student. I also think that we need to continue to nurture the Labor Management Partnership Agreement, which is a relatively new agreement that the district has adopted, where the superintendent and administration and unions are very congenial and sit down at the same table without a lawyer present. And this is unusual for Culver City. This is unusual for school districts in general, and it's been extremely fruitful, productive, and everyone is happy. The teachers are happy, the administration is happy, HR is very happy, and that needs to continue to be nurtured. And I want to make a third point, which is a relatively new one to this table, is that I think it'd be interesting to explore our hiring and to think about whether or not our teachers are representing the diversity of the community that they're teaching. I'd be interested in pursuing ways to increase teacher diversity, because if students are taught by diverse and competent teachers, they're able to connect with the enormously diverse real world around them.
Thank you. Okay, what kind of numbers have we got? Okay. Amazing. Okay, Scott, you're going to get to go to the next one.
What's the next topic?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I've got like one more, I guess, question considering how long I talk.
How about campus climate and safety? That's something we haven't talked about at all tonight.
Sure. Okay. So campus, there is nothing more important to parents than the safety of their kids. That's just where we start. That's the most basic thing. When Newtown occurred, the horrible massacre a few years ago, United Parents of Culver City, the very first thing we did was organize a safety forum. And that safety forum was attended by, well, it was packed, as you can imagine. And we started going over our safety protocols of the school district, and changes occurred immediately, as in the next day. As an El Moreno parent, I recall, the day after the forum, the gate that I always used to basically sneak my daughter in at the last minute was now locked. And I was wondering, was that my fault? Because I helped... Because helping to organize a safety forum? But the reason why they locked that gate was because there were no adults watching who would come onto the campus, whereas when they had the gate by the district, the school office, there were professional, there were employees of the district seeing who came in and out. And it was inconvenient, but it was important. And the district has bought more cameras than they've ever had before. I believe we have another resource officer online, and I could be wrong about that, but that's with the Culver City Police Department, but we do have an excellent resource officer who visits the campuses on a daily basis. I think we're doing a good job. I'm not going to pretend I'm an expert in where we are in campus safety. As a parent, I want to believe that we're doing the right thing. As a school board member, I'll make sure we're doing the right thing. And the last thing, since I probably have like 10 seconds left, is Kids at Hope. The superintendent brought in this great program that promises some cultural change in our school sites. And Kids at Hope is kind of a different way of saying at-risk kids. And at first, it's sort of like, oh, it's just a name, but really, it's an important approach, that every single kid has hope, that we can reach that kid. And it's a responsibility of every adult at that school to see that child, that inside that child, there is hope that we can reach them, no matter what we think they, whatever ceiling we think they had. We have to get away from those beliefs and believe that that child has hope. And it's our responsibility to make that connection with that child and see them in that light. I think it promises a great cultural shift for schools in general. And our district, though, I wouldn't say our district's doing a bad job, I think this is a great way for our district to really move forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Where are we?
Okay.
Help me here. Backwards and inside out. Okay.
I have time to cook a pot roast. 14-minute pot roast.
Can I buy her time?
We could have a little fundraiser here, couldn't we? Okay. That works for me. Just deciding which school it goes to is the problem. Okay. Don't talk too much. Go ahead.
Okay. Climate safety and campus safety at the schools is different now than probably most of us in the audience here. We have a whole new boat of types of things. We have cell phones and social media, so we have cyberbullying, and we have sexting. So, I know there is a campaign, I believe at LAUSD, that just recently started called Now Matters Later, and it is about basically educating students on anti-sexting and the consequences of what sexting is. So I think it's important that we also bring that into Culver City, so that we can educate students on how to create a safe environment for students and their peers, and teachers as well. I was part of the Olvea's Anti-Bullying Prevention Program Task Force in the district for the last few years, so that has also been part of the building a safe climate for students. From a counseling perspective, from a school counseling perspective, I'm always a fan of encouraging pro-social behavior and moving away from purely punitive behavior. I think if we can build social intelligence in our students, then we can create students that have healthy relationships with themselves, and that really can foster a truly safe climate at the schools.
Thank you. Kelly?
Okay. So, increasing counselors is important. We're doing that currently, and we should do more of it. Threat assessment is important. We're doing that currently, and that's a proactive, rather than reactive, approach. And then also, a climate that emphasizes a supportive community is much less likely to be a violent atmosphere, and that's some of what's happening with Kids at Hope, okay? We're emphasizing a supportive community there, and I feel strongly about that. Also, from the neuroscience perspective, because our brains are wired to be social, and it turns out that you must learn socially. We're not meant to learn in isolation. And so, the more supportive an environment we have, yes, it's less violent, but it's also more conducive to learning. But because I like to throw in new things, I'd like to throw in a new thing, which is that I was thinking about something, one step further, which is that I think we can make a difference in what's considered acceptable behavior in social situations. We've dramatically stigmatized driving under the influence. We can dramatically stigmatize violence on and off-campus by creating mentor programs with seniors and freshmen that talk through various scenarios. What would you do if you saw a friend leaving a party about to drive too drunk? Easy, right? What would you do if you saw a friend leaving a party with someone that was too intoxicated to make good decisions? These conversations can shift a culture that leads to better choices both in school and at home.
Thank you. Okay, folks, what do we got?
That's where it was last time.
Okay. Roger, I'm having a little trouble with you.
That smiley face?
No, I understand it. Thank you very much. Okay, and what do we got? Okay. So, we just go with the two who have minutes left, and we give the one to, okay. So since you have so much time left, do you have something you'd like to talk about?
Anything, huh? Oh, okay, the list.
The list.
Sure. How about we haven't discussed the role of the board, more specifically, what that is. All right. So I envision, we've talked a lot about what we could do, and how we can, policies we can make, and what we feel strongly about. But truly, just so that all of you know, and the audience knows, there are some specifics roles of a school board member, okay? One of those to employ the superintendent in setting the policy for hiring personnel. Another is to oversee the development and adoption of policy. Another is to set the direction for and adopt curriculum. Also to establish budget priorities, adopt budget, and oversee facilities issues. And lastly, to provide direction for and accept collective bargaining agreements. Scott and I are actually qualified in different ways for all of these areas, and we've actually participated in each of those functions as a potential school board member. We are lucky, we already have an Assistant Superintendent at Services, who manages learning and instruction in our district. We have a superintendent who manages business services. So those are already in place. We don't need to come in and do that, and have that specific niche in our toolbox. But what we can do is do the big-picture stuff and see. Manage this bond money. Manage what's happening with the facilities. Work on the infrastructure. Find the gaps. Work on creating a more successful environment for our students and our teachers and our staff. So I just want to reiterate that these are things, those are really the roles of a school board member. It's not to be a teacher, or an advanced educator, or someone who has a very specific idea of what they can bring to the table, but to really encompass all of those things and be a guide for all those things for the district.
Thank you. Kelly?
So I have to answer that? Well, since I have 1:50, can I pass? Because I'd prefer to answer something else. Is that appropriate?
We'll make it appropriate.
Okay.
This is an experimental evening. We're going to do the best we can.
I just want to use my time wisely.
Could I have 30 more minutes?
No. You're going to have 25 more.
Out front, yeah. I'll get on the soapbox.
Okay. All right. Since you're down to the nubs, give us the, give us the subject.
Oh, okay. So, again, I wanted to speak to something that I feel like I have a unique perspective on. So one of the topics was student needs with the subtopics of support outside the classroom. And so, here, it's important to bring up my work with Parks and Recreation Commission. I've done that for a year. One of the primary focuses of this commission and the department is to provide support for students outside of the classroom. This occurs through the teen center, through parks, through classes taught by the department, some of which are free of charge. It includes athletic activities, academic opportunities, camps, after-school care. I know that learning does not stop at the end of the school day, nor does it only start in preschool or in kindergarten. And the more that our school district and our city can partner to bolster the support for the entire community, but especially our students, the better. I actually think that this is an excellent opportunity to incorporate in the flipped learning model, and I have this idea that if the school district and the city can partner and perhaps contribute funds to our county library, that students will have access to the technology and videos that they need to do for their flipped learning at the library, so that they don't need to be provided with an iPad to take home, although that is also a potential option. If the city and the district were to partner, what if we could provide summer instruction opportunities also through funding to the county library that take place through the three months, during which some of these students really show a widening gap in their achievement between May and September?
Okay. I like a person who's prepared. Thank you very much.
I have lots of time, so I'll answer it quickly. Student needs are unique, and they vary, so we have to just pay attention to what those are. But there are five ways to respond to student needs, that the American School Counseling Association suggests, for teachers and for staff, and for anyone who's working in schools. One is affirmation. Two is contribution. Three is with power. Four is with purpose. And then five is challenge. So, my perspective is coming away as to how to address student needs when they come to the table. One of the things that builds, or one of the unique needs, I think, that really needs to occur, I think, is for students to be successful, is a stronger teacher-student relationship, and how we can support teachers and students to build those connections and those relationships. What tends to happen, then, is you get students who are resilient. When you get students who are resilient, they're better learners, and they're more successful in life. I think that one of the things we've looked at in our district, which we'll continue to work on, is the other student needs outside the classroom, such as poverty. We do have a program, Backpacks for Kids, which has addressed that. That is a critical need, and I would continue to work with all the people who are doing the work now, to continue to understand those type of needs that help students become successful in the classroom.
Thank you.
Two-minute closings? Two-minute closings?
Well, are we finished, complete?
Yes, 4:23 left.
Do you want to use it, or do you want to defer to everybody making a closing statement?
I have prepared an interpretive dance. I will hold that, I guess, for later, you know?
Okay. It's good to have people with a sense of humor here. All around, on both sides of me. Okay, so, we're going to go ahead and do your closing statement. So, is it your preference, since you had time left over, to go first or last, or in the middle?
I'll go in the middle.
Okay, Scott?
So...
Two minutes.
A few years ago, it was a terrible time to get elected to the school board. The recession hit, and the only thing the school board did was cut, or try not to cut, but there was no opportunity for school board members to expand upon their vision for schools and make things better. It was all trying to protect what we had. This is also an interesting time, because the thing that school board members are going to be doing is working on this bond. That is what is going to occupy our time. It's mastering the small details of the bond. I feel like Ann and I have a head start, but it is daunting, even though we've been working on this for more than a year, to see all the decisions we have to make, and how much of our focus is going to be spent on the bond. We're both very gratified over the fact that the two remaining, excuse me, three remaining school board members, the two of them who have endorsed in this race, have endorsed both Ann and I. And we also have a very good relationship with the third, which is Sue Robbins. To me, that's an invitation to be part of the team. The team that's going to guide the reshaping of this district based on the $106 million bond. I feel like I'm ready to be part of that team. I want to be part of that team, and I'm going to do everything I can to make that team work. Whoever gets elected, whichever two of the three of us, I think we'll be able to work together, but ultimately, I have the relationships, and Ann does as well, with those board members, that we are going to get things done. We know each other, we trust each other, we've worked with each other, and it's going to be with a common sense of purpose, a common vision on making our schools better right now. We've got very good schools, they can be great, and I feel like Ann and I are the candidates to make those schools great.
Thank you. Okay. Kelly? Are we going to, yeah, we're going with Kelly.
Middle.
You want to be in the middle, that's right. Never mind. You're in the middle now. Good. Okay.
I am ready to serve on the school board. Like I mentioned earlier, I've been working on the school bond campaign and the school bond initiatives for a couple of years now, starting from the onset of when it became even a concept. I will continue the culture of respect and engagement that's currently on the board, which I think is important, as we strive for the continual improvement of the programs. My seven-year track record of service as a true parent leader in this school district is evidence of my investment and dedication to the entire school district and our community. I have the trust from parent leaders from every single school. We have endorsements from parents from every single school in the district. Elrin Khan, El Marino, La Bayona, Farragut, Lynwood Howe, Middle School, Culver Park, I Academy, and the high school. We have endorsements and trust from every parent from representing all of those schools. I can make you a campaign promise. I will work my hardest to expedite this process of getting this bond process, which can be slow, to expedite it as fast as possible, to work with the state architect department to make sure, see how we can get that bond money to work. The longer we wait, the more expensive it gets, and we don't want to be waiting for that. And then you can count on me to be a champion for the success of all the students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
So I was thinking I would close by highlighting the supporters of mine that know me in my work capacity, because that's relevant, as I'm asking to be elected to serve in a work capacity on the Board of Education. So, I am supported by a former school board member, Scott Zeidman, and it's important that he's a school board member, but it's also important that he's currently a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, because that means he and I have served together for almost a year. He has seen me in that work capacity, and he is impressed. And he stands behind me in a way that is unique and really notable, because I was new to the town, new to the commission, new to the political climate, and have been able to be productive and cooperative, and really enjoy the work that we've done. I'm also supported by people who have seen me in my work capacity through parent volunteer work. So I'm supported by the person who I started the Spanish program with. She has seen me through all of the incredible hours, and twisting and turning and wrangling to try to figure out how to start a program from nothing and with nothing, and serve 200 students, and actually get it to a place where it's now viable, and it's going to be in existence next year. I'm supported by the person who's seen me serve on the Board of the Boosters at Lynwood Howe, which is also a work capacity, and the Boosters is the funding organization that the parents supplement funding with. All three of these people have seen me in my work capacity and feel very proud to stand vociferously behind me. And I came into this race later than my opponents, and that meant, at that time, that I was a bit of an underdog, you know, and really running a grassroots campaign. And I have had so much incredible support, really, I mean, inspiring support. And that's because I am trusted, they know I will work with integrity, and that I know a lot about what students need to learn. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. First of all, I would like to thank the audience for coming. Congratulations on coming and hearing them firsthand. I think that's a very good thing to do. For those of us who have been in this position, I know this is a very difficult place to be, but it's good to see commitment on all of your parts, and we want to wish you well. I want to thank Frances for, as usual, coming up with something very interesting.
And Thea was my...
Okay. And we want to encourage everybody to vote, but we also want to make sure that they know that there's literature on the tables. The city of Culver City for the great facilities. Our moderator, Julie, author of six books, and she's cooked three pot roasts while she's been sitting here. The candidates for their patience and sincerity, and also just for the commitment that they've shown by running for office. Our lobby volunteers, Gerald Salas and Letha Kemper, and our timers, Thea, Steve, and Roger, and our videographer, Doug Nielsen, he will be...
If you don't get the city channel, not to worry, we'll link it to SmartVoter, smartvoter.org, which is our 24/7 candidate forum. And then finally, thank you for your attention, your willingness to experiment, and for coming out to vote on November 3rd.